So at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And thank everybody for coming. Hopefully, everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving and looking forward to the joyous occasion in front of us very shortly. And thank everybody for coming and making time for tonight's meeting and under the circumstances of COVID and we're doing all this extra special care for this, but it's critical that our town stays up and running in the forward direction. So at this time, I'd like to have Anita read the warrant. If she wants, you can read there if you'd like. Yeah, if you don't want to come close to me. Yes, hit the button.
Okay. To either of the constables of the town of Rutland and the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Glenwood Road Elementary School Auditorium in said Rutland on Thursday, the 12th day of November 2020, postponed to the third day of December 2020 at 6:00 in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles.
Thank you, Anita. At this time, would everybody please rise to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, folks, I believe everybody does have their electronic pads with them. Our guests are over here to our right. Just, I may introduce our folks just because we're kind of scattered around a little bit different because of our six-foot distance. To my far left, on the other side of the glass, is Town Council with us tonight and Lauren Goldberg. Beside her is our town clerk, Anita Carlson. Behind me is Assistant Town Clerk Damian Baritech is controlling my computer screen in front of us. On my right is our new town administrator, if those have not met him, it's Ron something.
San Antonio.
Yeah, that's good. That's close, right?
It works, it works.
Rockin' Ron is our new town administrator. Beside him is Chairman of the Board of Selectmen is Mitch. Over beside Mitch is Ian, who is Chairman of the Finance Board. Beside Ian is Karen Norwell. And then more of the finance members scattered out in front of them is Mr. Ross against the fence, Mr. Rochailler. On the inside, and Mr. Lucier is also here, sitting in the back row for the finance. In front of me, we have Leah Whitman on Close Whitman, Close. All right, you're sticking your tongue out at me. I got it close, right? Select lady, we have Lyndon Nichols, select person or select man, Skip Clark, select man beside Lyndon, and Jeff Stillings in the back. And I... I could probably do all but one, maybe two. So, all right, folks, if there's questions, please ask. We're going to do the best we can. If you do need to come up for your mic, we're going to come here to the mic and you've got to take the... Once you speak, we're going to take the mask off and put it into the box and we'll put a new mask on. If we're good and we can yell, we don't necessarily need to come up for the mask to do that as well, but we try to get it so it's being recorded as well as that. So we're going to just try to do the best we can tonight and get through this as easily as we possibly can. If there's no questions, I'm going to start with Article One to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town stabilization fund or take any action thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $21,927.35 from free cash to the town stabilization fund.
Does this motion receive support? A motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by hitting your green vote button for yes, no for red. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. The ballot box is closed. I guess there's no reason that I need to tell them what the count is, it's just passed by the majority. It passes by the majority of the vote, there were 27 yeses. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% to certified free cash to the town's capital stabilization fund or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $21,927.35 from free cash to town's capital stabilization fund.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, we will now vote. All those in favor, please signify by your green buttons. Green buttons for favorable, non-favorable would be the no button, would be the red All those voted who wish, there are... Motion carries, 26 yeses. Moving on to Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's OPEB trust fund or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $21,927.35 from free cash to the town's other post-employment benefit trust fund.
Motion is made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance?
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? If not, we'll now open votes. All those in favor, please hit the green button. All those opposed will be the red button. All those voted who wish, there are... I declare the ballot box closed. Yes are 28, no's are zero, abstained are zero. Moving on to Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from available funds, including free cash, to the funding source approved for the FY 2021 operating budget under Article 11 of the June 27, 2020 annual town meeting, as many as may be necessary or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $205,000 from free cash to be added to the funding source for the 2021 budget, operating budget, approved under Article 11 of the June 27, 2020 annual town meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those who choose to vote, please vote with a green button yes, reds would be no. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Yes is 27, no's are two, zero abstained. Moving on to Article Five, to see if the town will vote to amend the actions taken in Article 12 of the annual town meeting dated June 27, 2020, to the amendment sums for operation of the water and sewer enterprise fund for the fiscal year 2021 as the following. I believe you have those in front of you, I will not read the numbers. Further, that of said amended sum in appropriation of $2,137,845.04 to be raised from available departmental receipts, investment earnings, and other revenues of the combined water, sewer enterprise fund or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town amend the water sewer enterprise fund for FY 21 budget approved under Article 12 of the June 27, 2020 annual town meeting by increasing or decreasing the line items by the amounts listed in the column change, so that the new budget is set forth in the column entitled 11/2020. And 11/12, sorry, 11/12/2020 and further to reduce by $363,806.80, the amount appropriated under said Article 12 from the water sewer enterprise FY 21 receipt as follows. Or do you want me to go through them?
As printed.
Is it as printed in the warrant or do people have the motions as well?
Mitch says it's in the warrant as well.
So I think the numbers changed a little. Should we... It could be saved.
I can go through them.
To be safe, can you read them, please?
Sure. Salaries on the 6/27/2020 number was $261,994. The change is $32,800, bringing the 11/12/2020 total to $294,794. Expenses on the 6/27/2020 was $1,230,398,398. The change is $236,800, bringing the new total on 11/12/2020 to $1,467,198. Debt principal on 6/27/2020, $190,525. The change is a minus $35,525, bringing the new total to $155,000 on 11/12/2020. Debt interest on 6/27/2020 was $35,525. The change is an additional $568,000. The new total is $44,093 on 11/12/2020. The capital outlay, we voted on $595,000. The change is a minus $595,000, bringing that to a zero. The indirect charges, 6/27/2020 was $188,209.84. The change is a minus $11,449.80, bringing the new total to $176,760.04. The new totals is $2,506,51,84 on 6/27/2020. The change is minus $363,806.80. The new total is $2,137,845.04.
Second.
Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, I now declare voting open. All those in favor, please signify using your green button. All those opposed will be the red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. There are... Motion carries, 27 favorably, two negatively, zero abstained. Moving on to Article Six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including town water and sewer enterprise-related earnings, free cash, a sum of $50,000 for the establishment of the town water sewer enterprise reserve or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, that number has been changed. The Finance Committee voted before this meeting to change that number to $250,000. We've had a few water leaks and problems, so that we've been asked to change this number. So, Mr. Moderator, I move the town amend the water sewer enterprise fund fiscal 21 budget approved on Article 12 of the June 27, 2020... Is that correct? Am I... Yep. Annual town meeting by adding a new line titled Reserve and is funding therefore to transfer some of $250,000 from the water sewer enterprise retained earnings.
Second.
So is this an amendment or an emotion?
This is the motion.
This is the motion.
Well, he used the word amendment, that's why I was asking.
We're amending the meeting.
So a motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? If you can yell loud enough, Joe, you're welcome to stay there.
You can yell me, Randy, I can yell loud. I'm in the backyard, teen Crestview Drive. So the question, given some of the recent challenges on the rate structure with water and sewer enterprise, this question was probably more appropriately asked under Article Five, but I'll ask it now. Does the rate structure as it stands today support the budget that was just voted? Or are rates going to have to be reconsidered in order to support that appropriation?
Let me answer it. To you, Mr. Moderator. This won't change the rate structure. This is one-time cost to fix a water line that's broken and it's going to be used from the surplus that's in retained earnings, so it won't have any effect whatsoever on the rate.
And I apologize, because again, I probably should have asked a question in Article Five. It was more a reference to Article Five, the budget that was voted under Article Five, because that is the budget, the full departmental operation of the rate structure. Current rate structure supports the $2.137 million.
In Article Five, I think the answer is yes. And I don't believe the DPW director is going to change it, I think the answer is clearly yes.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? You're welcome to yell at me.
Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road. I just have a quick question. The $20,000 sent on sewer pump repairs, do we have any idea how old those pumps are? I'm assuming they're pumping stations and subdivisions.
Well, I'm going to refer to our DPW, but I'm not sure that that even applies to this, because this is really just setting up the reserve fund under this particular account. So it doesn't talk about individual specific repairs, although the reason it went from $50,000 to $250,000 is because we know of a water pipe that is leaking, it has to be fixed. But I don't... I'm not sure that... I think your question goes more to the regular budget than it does this particular question.
No, it's... It's the explanation.
Can I explain?
Mr. Buckley?
We're on item number six.
Just don't touch the mic and then we don't have to do any of that stuff.
You're not putting me on the spot, it's a good question. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
All right. When we originally wrote this article, we put aside $50,000 from free cash in case we had an emergency failure, like a pump station failure. In the last year or so, I can tell you, we had two pump failures, one at, I want to say Barnard Road or Valley View. Valley View Road, we had a station fail. I don't know the exact date of installation, I would estimate sometime in the 80s. That one pump repair cost us about $20,000. So the extra money, the $50,000, was there in case we have a failure. I don't want to spend it.
I understand. I was asking a question for a different reason.
Oh, all right.
I can share with you later.
All right.
You answered it. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this article, please hit your green buttons. All those opposed, your red buttons, please. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. There's 27 yeses, one no, zero abstains. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $25... Boy, they should have put the number on the other page, that's pretty bad on the front there. All right, we're going to go on to Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $800 to the account number 001-141-5200-000. Assessor Purchase Services to update the town access GIS or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $800 from free cash to account Assessors Purchase Services to update the town's access GIS system, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I declare ballots open now. All those in favor, please hit the green button yes, no's would be red. I declare that... All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 28 yes, zero no's, zero abstained. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $25,606.55 to the account number 001-129-5110-000. Town administrator salary or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town amend the fiscal 2021 operating budget approved under Article 11 of the June 27, 2020 annual town meeting by transferring the sum of $25,606.55 from free cash to account number 001-129-5110-000. Town administrator salary.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance?
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use the green button. All those opposed, please use the red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. There are... Motion carries with 23 yeses, four no's, zero abstained. Moving on to Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $24,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Fund to the PEG Access and Cable-related operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and authorize the Cable Access Committee to spend such appropriate and to revert all unspent funds at the close of such fiscal year back to the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, Peter Crane, member of the Cable Advisory Committee, I move that the town transfer the sum of $24,000 from the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund to PEG Access and Cable-related Operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, specifically for the purchase and installation of hardware and software as appropriate to upgrade television production equipment, including all incidental and related expenses. Authorize the Cable Access Committee... Ah, sorry, Cable Advisory Committee to expend such appropriation and to revert all unspent funds at the close of such fiscal year back to the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance?
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please use your green buttons and press it. Although, don't drop it, I didn't say. All those opposed, please use the red buttons. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. There are 25 yeses, three no's. Motion carries, zero abstained. Moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $11,838 to the fund, the town portion of the retirement benefit due to the Wachusett Regional School District employee in accordance with the Section 18 of the amended Wachusett Regional School District Agreement or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $11,838 from free cash to fund the town's portion of the retirement benefit due to the last Wachusett Regional School District employee in accordance with Section 18 of the amended Wachusett Regional School District Agreement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, we use the red buttons. I declare the ballot bar... All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. There are 23 yeses, three no's, zero abstained. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $14,360 to fund the purchase of replacement fire alarm systems at the library, including all incidental and related expense or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $8,930 from the Naquadah Green Project Fund, $360, and the sum of $5,430 from free cash to fund the purchase and installation of a replacement fire alarm system at the library, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. 27 yeses, one no. I declare it a winner. I thought that was a voting thing going wrong. So, moving on to Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $50,000 for the purchase of the use of a five-ton dump with a plow and accessory associated winter equipment, including all incidentals and related expense or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $10,000 from the Road Maintenance Fund, 231, and the sum of $40,000 from Capital Stabilization to purchase a used five-ton dump with plow and associated winter and other equipment, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Joe Becker, 18, Crestview Drive. The road maintenance 231, is that Chapter 90? No. Is that from our regular general budget appropriation road maintenance?
No. I believe that... 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 I believe that...
Would this fifteen grand, or in this case, the, uh, you know, the ten thousand dollars of it be better utilized for actual road maintenance? And, and we find the ten grand in general free cash, because it appears we have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand in free cash left after everything's expended tonight, would we be better off using that road maintenance fund for actual road maintenance versus a truck? Which I understand clears snow on the roads, but it's not fixing potholes, it's not fixing problems with the, with the road structure, uh, road infrastructure.
Finance choose to give an opinion of why the money's coming out of road maintenance, AKA Mr. Williams' question and Mr. Becker's question, really.
I mean, that was the recommendation that we received from, um, from the administration. Two, two things, on the, uh, the free cash total at the end, it looks like it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars at the end. And normally, that's, just, just so everybody knows, normally, we use two hundred thousand dollars to start the year with for our free cash that we put towards our budget. So, we're already eighty thousand there in the hole. Um, I did not, uh, we haven't seen the road maintenance, um, before that, and there was no question about it. So, Joe, if you wanna say anything towards the, the maintenance?
I guess, can you give an opinion, because it was your recommendation, if I understand correctly, to them, of why you're taking ten grand out of that thing and not fixing Dick's road, or answer Mr. Becker's question, please?
So, the question is, do you, is it, would that ten thousand be better spent on, on a road, or would the ten thousand be better spent on the truck? Is that the question you're asking?
Yes.
Um, I, I'd probably go with the truck. Uh, ten thousand, in all frankness, ten thousand dollars doesn't get you very far with a roadway repair. Um, on, uh, by means of example, we're gonna pave the work we did on Inwood Road. Uh, we did water work this year. It's been, the trench has been paved, but we're gonna go back and resurface that road in the spring after the water work. That bill is sixty thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars doesn't go very far for a roadway repair. I don't think it's the best use of the funds. I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Becker, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I don't want to. One, one last comment. I understand ten thousand in the large scheme of things isn't, isn't a huge amount of money. And I wanna, I wanna also say, I'm in full, in, fully in support of the truck. You know, I think the truck should be purchased. I think the question is, is whether that ten thousand dollars should be put towards the truck or roads. And instead of it being put towards the truck, use ten thousand dollars from free cash for the truck instead, and use the ten thousand dollars towards road maintenance, because we have so little money in our town for actual road maintenance. That's, that's my concern. I know it's not a lot, but it's ten thousand more than we'd have if we spent it on the truck.
You'd like to comment?
If I could just comment a little bit on that. I appreciate your comment. And when we were putting together, uh, this agenda, the warrant, uh, at the time, free cash wasn't even a hundred.
I'm sorry. When we were putting together the warrant for this meeting, free cash had not yet been certified. And at the time that we did the finance meeting, free cash was something in the neighborhood of forty to forty-five thousand dollars. Since then, we had a certified free cash. It now is a little bit higher. But I would also suggest to you that we gotta get all the way through the end of the year, and there may be other capital needs that we might have to use this free cash, the remaining hundred and twenty thousand for. And that's a very, very small amount of money. So I would be a little bit afraid of taking more money out of free cash when we have so little, in case there's other significant problems going up into the annual town meeting.
Any other questions or comments on this article? Any other questions or comments? Is there any further discussion? So we are voting on Article twelve. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, push the red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion, yes, nineteen, no, eight, one abstained. I declare it a winner. Moving on to Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax agreement for the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot pursuit of MGL, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight HB, and Chapter one sixty-four, Section one, or take any act, or, or any other enabling authority, and upon terms and conditions as the Board shall deem in the best interest of the town for the personal property associated with a solar photovoltaic facility having a proposal and nameplate capacity of approximately three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, no, three hundred and sixty-seven point two kilowatts built upon the roof of Glenwood Elementary School at sixty-five Glenwood Road in Rutland, or take all actions necessary to implement such agreement or take any other actions related thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that, uh, we pass over this article. It was, uh, passed in a previous town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on the motion.
Sorry. Recommend favorably on the vote, the motion.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All right. I declare the ballots open. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, use your red buttons, please. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Yes is twenty-three, no is two, zero abstain. Motion carries. Moving on to Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize a Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax agreement in a payment in lieu of taxes, pilot pursuit of MGL, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight HB, and in Chapter one sixty-four, Section one, or take other enabling authority, and upon terms and conditions as the Board shall deem in the best interest of the town for the personal property associated with a solar photol, solar photovoltaic facility, having the proposal nameplate capacity of approximately a hundred and eighty-nine kilowatts built upon the roof of the Central Tree Middle School at two eighty-one Main Street in Rutland, or take all actions necessary to implement such agreement or take any other actions related thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Select Board to enter into a tax agreement for payments in lieu of taxes pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight HB, and Chapter one sixty-four, Section one, or any other enabling authority with the owner of a solar photovoltaic facility installed or to be installed upon the roof of the Central Tree Middle School at two eighty-one Main Street in Rutland, or the owner's affiliates, assigns or successors with such agreement to be for a term not exceeding twenty-five years, and on such other terms and conditions as the Select Board may deem to be in the best interests of the town, and to authorize the Select Board to take any actions and execute any other documents and ancillary agreements necessary, convenient, or appropriate to accomplish the foregoing and to implement and administer such agreement.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those, please hit your green buttons. All those opposed, hit your red buttons, please. Kind of a quiet evening with everybody just hitting buttons there. You guys are getting pretty good. You're doing it pretty quick. Everybody voted this time but one person, so. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Twenty-six yeses, one no. Declare it favorable. Moving on to Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL, Section thirty-two, Section four, two B and a half, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-two, Section four, two B and a half, which will allow service by a permanent intermittent or call firefighter to be credited for purposes of retirement as full-time service as provided in paragraph B of said statute, except that credit for such service shall not be conditioned upon the appointment of said permanent intermittent or call firefighter as a permanent member of the Fire Department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, red buttons, please. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Yes was twenty-six, no were twos, zero abstain. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote, sixteen, the one I was gonna read, Article sixteen, I'm sorry. It's, it's the mask. It's really not my eyes. To see if the town will vote to appro, will vote to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to adopt special legislation authorizing and directing the Worcester Regional Retirement System to retire Detective John D. Sanji pursuant to MGL, Section thirty-two, uh, Section one hundred and Section one hundred and A, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for special legislation authorizing and directing the Worcester Regional Retirement System to retire Detective John D. Sanji pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-two, Sections one hundred and one hundred A, and further, to authorize the General Court to make changes of form only to such legislation unless approved by the Select Board prior to enactment, and further, to authorize the Board to approve such changes as within the public purposes of this petition.
Does this motion receive support? Second. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, will be the red buttons, please. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Uh, this motion received twenty-three yeses, three noes, one abstain. Motion carries. Moving on to Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the votes, oh, just to be transparent, folks, I am a member of the Agricultural Commission, and this is just to clear something up. Um, my assistant is not here to step me down tonight, but I don't believe there should be a conflict in this. So Article second, seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the votes taken under Article twenty-five, Article twenty-six of the May two thousand and nineteen annual town meeting to clarify the intent, therefore, to create the Agricultural Preservation Fund rather than an open space preservation stabilization fund, and to appropriate five hundred dollars to the said, so that such votes will be, provide as follows. Do you want me to read? Probably should read it to you. Article twenty-five, move that the town create an agricultural preservation fund under the provisions of GL, Section forty, Section eight L H, to be exempt by the agricultural, expended by the Agricultural Commission for the purpose set forth within. And then, on the next page, Article twenty-six of that, Article twenty-six, move that the town will appropriate the sum of five hundred dollars from the Open Space Preservation Fund to said agricultural preservation fund.
Mr. Moderator. Town amend the votes taken under Article twenty-five and twenty-six of the May twenty nineteen annual town meeting to clarify that such votes created and funded an agricultural preservation fund rather than an open space stabilization fund, so that such votes will provide as follows. Article twenty-five, move that the town accept the provisions of General Law's Chapter forty, Section eight L, recognizing existence of an agricultural commission as a commission under the statute, and create an agricultural preservation fund under provision, provisions of General Law's Section, Chapter forty, Sections eight L subsection H, to be expanded by the Agricultural Commission for the purpose set forth therein. Article twenty-six, move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of five hundred to said agricultural preservation fund, and further, to authorize the town accountant to make such transfers of funds as necessary.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. There are twenty-five yeses, three noes, one abstain. Motion carries. Moving on to Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash a sum of four thousand dollars for the purpose of legal review by town council of modification of the town general bylaws in preparation for presentation and approval at a future town meeting or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town appropriate the sum of four thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of legal review by town council of proposed modific, modifications to the general bylaws in preparation for presentation and approval at future town meeting, and further, that any funds remaining after such review is complete and shall be closed to the town's general fund.
A motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance?
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by using your green buttons. All those opposed, will be use their red buttons. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Twenty-one yeses, five noes, zero abstain. Motion carries. At this time, I'm gonna do things a little backwards. I'd like to give a moment of silence to the Worcester Six that passed away a number of years ago, as today is the anniversary of that in Worcester. So if we all just give a little thought to the firefighters that we lost there in the Thank you for that. Just like to make people aware that the Historical Society is having the Festival of Trees going through Rutland Heights Hospital this weekend, so please come out and enjoy, and Santa Claus would love to see you. And also, next weekend, um, there'll be a live nativity thing at, um, Mesa Farm on Muscat Park Road, as usual, as a drive-through. And, uh, if there's any other things that I haven't announced, I'm, I'm sorry, but those are two that come to my mind that I'm aware of. And on your way out, please return the clickers. Uh, I would assume we're gonna put them on the table. To the, the girls who are out there will tell you, the, the workers out there will tell you where to put them, and hopefully, we can use them in the future. I thought that was really good. I also like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy new year. Thank you for coming. What's that?
Motion.
Mr. Ross, is that a motion? Second. All those in favor? All those, oh, all those opposed? My clicker lady left. Motion carries.